All right. It is 6:30 and we will go ahead and call meeting to order. Mr. Curtis, if you would, call the roll, please.
Mr. Daniel? Mr. Elrod?
Here.
Mr. Fann?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Chairman Sanders?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have four present, one absent. You have to call on service.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. We can proceed with our meeting. At this time, we will turn it over to George Curtis for a presentation of our Employee of the Month.
Mr. Chairman, our Employee of the Month, and I'll come down to the other mic in just a moment, is Ms. Cheryl Purcell. And Ms. Cheryl comes from Auburn Town, I think, close to all of us in this room. No, Ms. Cheryl? And let me read something to you, just for a second. Auburn's new principal, Miss Melinda Crook, nominated Ms. Purcell for this honor, and stated regarding this outstanding educator, "Ms. Cheryl always goes the extra mile for her students, parents, teachers, and staff. She has been here for 29 years and has perfect attendance for most of those years. She is always willing to do whatever is asked of her, usually before it is even asked." And I stated about Ms. Cheryl, "Ms. Cheryl is an outstanding employee that goes beyond her secretarial duties. She is a very special person who does, quote, 'whatever it takes,' unquote, for students, parents, and staff as a great encourager. I believe Ms. Cheryl personifies our mission of County County Schools, of preparing all students for their future by most assuredly being E3, engaged in excellence every single day." So it's my honor to present Ms. Cheryl. I would like to say one thing as she's coming up, though. Ms. Cheryl has probably known me longer than just about anybody in this room. And she worked with my mom in Alexandria for a number of years. And she's probably got some stories that you don't want to hear about me.
Well, maybe we did.
Or maybe you didn't. So Ms. Cheryl, come on in. Make sure I get the right phone to our photographer here.
Get the slimy one.
Slender phone.
Yeah.
Okay. Dr. Melton just sent me a message. All right, there you go. Got it, there, Kim. How's this right here? You want to hold your certificate, Ms. Cheryl? You want to shake my hand?
Okay.
Just go hug me, it's okay.
I'll hug you.
It's okay. Okay. Look over at Kim, these guys are telling her, thank you, Kim. Thank you, Ms. Cheryl. Right there, Ms. Cheryl. My pleasure.
I think that's quite all right.
Wake up, wake up.
Police officers there.
Hey, I know things about Travis, too.
She's got some authority, too, we can hear him later. Well, I turned that recorder off. I'm going to interview her. There you go.
All right. As always, congratulations to our Employee of the Month, Ms. Cheryl. All right. As we conduct our meeting, any statement made by any board member is the opinion of that individual and does not represent the County County Board of Education. If anyone would like to record the meeting, please bring your recorder and notify us this time. I believe the media has already done so. You are going on record. We will be discussing agenda items and agenda items only. If you would like to discuss with us further business, please feel free to see us after the meeting and we will discuss those. With that, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Motion's been made, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and second. Call the roll, please.
Motion made by Mr. Turner, seconded by Mr. Fann to approve the agenda for the January 10th, 2019, meeting of the County County Board of Education. Mr. Taylor, uh? Mr. Fann?
Aye.
Mr. Turner?
Aye.
Chairman Sanders?
Aye.
Four ayes, no nays.
Motion carried. Item two is our consent agenda. We have three things there. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I have motion.
Motion's been made, do we have a second?
Second.
I have one question. The coaches, we're going to pass this all again. Do you guys have somebody, a female player, become competent, a female shooter?
I've got, I don't have a female. I've got Dr. Fann, who always has no marriage, he's a female. So...
So you got a bunch of good guys picked out here. I just wondered, how many female players do you have? So you've got somebody representing, thinking you talk to somebody?
Yeah, there's been passion.
Okay.
Aye. Second.
Motion's been made and second. Further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Motion made by Mr. Elrod, seconded by Mr. Fann to approve the consent agenda, approve the meetings of the December 13th, 2019 meeting of the Board, approve West Trip number 3482, approve Charles Patterson, Marty Williams, Steve Wallen, and Gary Hallen as trap team coaches. Mr. Elrod?
Aye.
Mr. Fann?
Aye.
Mr. Turner?
Aye.
Chairman Sanders?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, four ayes, no nays.
Motion carried. Item three is to approve Board Policy 3.212 on district water testing. This is a new policy that Mr. Curtis was notified. We went through this at the workshop. Anybody having additional comments, questions, or concerns?
Mr. Chairman, this is strictly from TSBA and will be added to Board Policy number 3.212 if approved.
Make a motion to approve Policy 3.212. Motion's been made and second. Call the roll, please.
Motion made by Mr. Sanders, seconded by Mr. Elrod to approve Board Policy 3.212, district water testing as suggested by TSBA. Mr. Elrod?
Aye.
Mr. Fann?
Aye.
Mr. Turner?
Aye.
Chairman Sanders?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, four ayes, no nays.
Motion carried. Item number four was an item that was requested at our September board meeting to discuss the mowing contract. We discussed this at our workshop Tuesday. Heard from some of our principals, and I believe we had a few other principals here tonight. And Mr. Curtis has made some contacts, so this time we'll open the floor for any board member questions, comments, and Mr. Curtis, anything you might have.
Looking at the mowing contract previously, as this has been brought up from the September meeting, I did contact principals and most principals were saying that it did improve some. However, though, that they were still had concerns. Basically, the gist of the conversations I had, Mr. Mitchum is here, not representing principals, looking for others, other principals, and as Melinda is trying to hide from him, or she has already, she has done yet from me, so she has now. We're going up against a middle school basketball game right now. So, Mr. Mitchum, would you want?
The certainty we had did improve the last few mowings. We were concerned about the ability to contact and the wet grass being thrown around against the borders, laws, and things. Far as that...
So we have improvement at Short Mountain and improvement at Old Bear Grammar based on our workshop that's not...
And Yara Miss Cossi had to meet at the workshop. And Mr. King, obviously, sent me an email in regard to slight improvement, but still some issues at Westside. And the high school certainly was still an issue there, the high school. And...
Mr. Mitchum wasn't satisfied, Mr. Sanders, elaborating on it. Our concerns were satisfied after we had that September.
I've got this, Chairman, it's been a while.
If you don't mind, please.
If we continue with our current mowers, they need to come more often and on schedule as weather permits and mow everything, including our back playgrounds and fields. They're very cordial when you talk with them, and I don't know what circumstances occurred last fall, but those, but those things were not happening. Mr. King, Principal at Westside, is there?
All right.
Before it wasn't, and it did. It says, "I don't know what circumstances occurred last fall, but those things were not happening," meaning those things were not occurring at Westside.
Right. Do we have a recommendation from the Board?
Is that what it was? That we're looking at?
I've not heard anything from Auburn.
That's probably what I asked.
Or Eastside. I know Eastside, she didn't say, but she kind of didn't say like the way that it is. Specifically is because of being not the big field, not being down, it is baseball instead of being the whole thing.
Exactly.
Can you get a catch-up?
Right. You heard what Miss Cossi said about the can you get a catch-up?
Can I get a catch-up?
At Woodland. And Mr. Nichols basically said the same thing to me earlier today when I talked to him about that briefing. It's always been catch-up for high school.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes, sir.
What, like, inside? Probably right in there.
The way I interpret Ms. King's comments is that she would like to see improvement.
Right. Actually, yes, that's my attitude, that's what.
Two principals, in a sense, like, out of, obviously, they suit the meeting of the board.
Step down.
She's on it. Ms. Purcell, do you want to comment?
Hey, you want to, hey, you want to react, yes, I'm sorry.
I know, they call me Ms. Purcell, she gets you.
Trying to cross my head.
Where, I mean, there were several times that parts of it weren't mowed. A lot of what used to be the X R, but I think whoever mowed it didn't tell, so they were supposed to mow that. But there were parts that weren't needed and it's said late in getting it mowed.
Okay. We've heard from, representative from each school, so I'll ask again. Is there a recommendation from the Board?
I'd like to put this on the record. I've got some thinking about this. And I know two individuals that are bidders, I'm involved in on a financial basis. I'm personally involved in, but I did work with one. So I feel it would be best that for me, that I have my own interest, I want to step out. I'm like, let you guys decide, I'm going to allow it a little bit.
I can say that he's tried. Uh... To make it pretty clear, the last meeting in September, we'll talk about this. He has made an effort, he has improved. I'm still hearing some negative. Kind of makes it hard when you did show effort. But our principals are still not satisfied, for the most part. And I do hate that. Are you doing this by yourself?
I have a plan. I've got a lot of time. I know you want to, that's why I'm talking about those some of these. More about all the time, wanting to...
Do you think you bit off more than you could chew? Do you think you bit off more than you could chew?
I've started off.
Mr. Turner, I'll hold this up here.
I'm just conducting the meeting.
I may offer, Mr. Chairman, that mowing will not commence according to the contract till April 1, 2019, in the second partial portion of that. So if you want to put it under a little more study, you would still have one more month. But then March is coming and depending on wetness and conditions and all of that, but...
But that's my thing, I think, for... We already heard.
I was going to say, there's no further activity either way.
Yeah.
You know, I've said this many times, I don't know if there's any easy decision when you're dealing with students and finances. It was made clear at the September board meeting. There was very much dissatisfaction. And that nothing was acceptable, other than strict improvement that would make the principals' satisfaction. The majority of our principals are not satisfied. I'm going to have to stand behind the principals and behind this board action at September. So I make a motion that we, um... cease the contract effective 30 days from today. Motion's been made and second. Call the roll, please.
Motion made by Mr. Sanders, seconded by Mr. Elrod to cancel the mowing contract with Fisher landscaping, 7571, Short Mountain Road, Woodbury, Tennessee, or send a mowing bid notice, this is a two-year contract, sent to cancellation by either party with a 30-day written notice. Cancellation will take effect 30 days from this meeting, which is February 1-0-2019. Mr. Elrod?
Aye.
Mr. Fann?
Aye.
Mr. Turner?
I'm asking.
Chairman Sanders?
Aye.
Chairman Sanders, you have three ayes, no nays, one abstention.
Motion carried.
Chairman, with that, I would strongly suggest, because now there will be no mowing contract as of February 1-0, then at the February 14th meeting, that you, would you like to consider the next three lowest bids? Or is what's your desire to maybe to redid it? Or what's your desire of the Board, since this is not taking place?
Um... Good question, Mr. Curtis. I'm not sure of that rate from the contract, but for good business, we might consider that. Sending that in line, um, between you and Douglas, to make sure that happens.
Absolutely.
From the workshop, we did talk a little bit in anticipation of this might be the decision of the Board. Were you able to contact any of the previous bidders?
Douglas was able to contact Bedleys. It was the next highest at $2,500. And for two, it was cuttings at $3,500. For three, cuttings. Hampton Land Services declined, is that correct, Douglas? And then, and then you had the two others, B T, Go On Care, $2,800 and $4,200 for the three cuttings. And then Big John's at $3,000. And then $4,200 was Big John's for three. So those were the three next highest on the bid sheet. Which we still have the bid sheet, and I can snap back to you if you need that bid sheet that we were looking at from May 3. Once, as we do have two board members. I may try to get that, we'll try to get that back out to y'all, so let you look at that the two times and three times. All of them had their insurance liability of a million dollars, had that, had that. Every one of their bidders had that, except for the Mystic Engineers, which was out of the picture anyway, due to the high bid that they had. So...
So those three were interested and only one was not interested?
Hampton was not.
Yes, sir.
So that would be Bedleys and, um, BNT Go On Care and Big John's and so on.
And I know you've ordered that to us. Is that the same numbers?
The only thing I checked, that didn't, we didn't have four, it was BNT Go On Care at $2,800 and $4,200.
So...
And I looked back and relooked at that again, and they would be the next highest after Bedleys and then Big John's.
Um, but they are at the same price that they originally did?
Correct. Those are all the bids, and Douglas, that's correct, but all of them weren't that same price. Right. And I contacted W and T, and they did too. So everybody's kept their original bids. So what I would suggest to the Board, if you do consider the next three lowest bid, we put that in a motion, and then, and then you will decide on the February 14th. I don't think you want between May, uh, February 10th and 14th, but, um... So you will decide on your February 14th meeting which way you want to go among those. You can, you can, Mr. Chairman, make a motion tonight if you so desire. However, that will not take place until your February 14th meeting. I would do, I would probably make it on the February 14th meeting. But you may motion it, I absolutely would, but knowing that the 30 days that that contract expires on February 10th. Since you're not going to, if the Board decides not to redid. I'm on the right track there, Douglas, on that, and that. They can go ahead, the 30, the 30 days, the three days are activated now. You did that with your previous motion. So then you would have, um, that take place.
Is 30 days or up?
I don't think we should hire a squibber like you.
Is 30 days or up?
No, I did not. They had said that already, I'm getting a mowing contract, it possibly considered.
This is my thinking. You guys tell me what you think. There's not going to be any landscaping of any kind between now and then. We know what the bids are, they've agreed, same price they originally bid at. Yes, there's a 30-day notice. It's not going to change based on the action from this meeting. We have someone from each of these here tonight, knowing that it's going to be on the agenda. I'd like to make a motion that we award the bid to Big John's Mowing. Although it's not the lowest bid, there was satisfaction unanimously across the district. And they have expressed interest to continue that, and we had good rapport. So I put that in form of motion for Big John's at the price given. Motion's been made, do we have a second? Motion's been made and second. Call the roll, please.
Motion made by Mr. Sanders, seconded by Mr. Elrod to award the mowing contract bid to Big John's Mowing at $3,000 for two times per month and $4,200 for three times per month. Mr. Elrod?
Aye.
Mr. Fann?
Aye.
Mr. Turner? Chairman Sanders?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, three ayes and one abstention.
Motion carried. So from there, um, you want to, even though I believe you might be here, Mr. House, and get a contract effective, I believe you said April.
Well, you can do it probably any day that the Board suggests after the contract date, but... I think, but they did say, the bid spec sheet did say that it would begin on or about April 1, is what the bid spec stated. So April 1, I think April 1 is that. But the bid, the bid sheet did say on or about, on or about the 1st of April. Mowing schedule will begin, of course, just last summer, July 1, through October 3-1. One will resume around, April, around April 1 until October 3-1, 2019. And then one will resume again around April 1, 2020 until June 3-0, 2020.
Okay. So based on our action and the words of the contract, I believe it would be, um... proper business to make that effective April 1.
Yes, sir.
How do I take it, Chair? Okay. Move on to item number five. Consider possible action on sale of Veterans Memorial Museum. We also discussed this at length in our meeting Tuesday night, excuse me, our workshop Tuesday night. So I'll open the floor for any comments, suggestions there.
I didn't know it was on the agenda, I wasn't in there. Um, what, what did you all discuss?
We got a few people, or I have personally, give me some reasons not to. The Senior Citizen Center sent us all a letter, they were a little worried about it, parking. I think they were a little concerned that their building might be up for sale, too. I did have several individuals say that the county didn't think selling property that we might have to buy back. I really want to see this gym used by citizens, and it's not being used. What I really wish would happen is that the school system would fix the gym and we could use it the way it should be used. Commission, in the way it is now... it should be used. Commission, in the way it is now, it's going to happen for a while.
So in the meantime, it's going to sit there and fall apart, I mean, I have pictures that we could, I could show, we're putting all the ways to go through and look at it, I, I mean, there are kids who are outside, that have nothing to do, nowhere to go, and they'll just stand up here in the cold, and be with their friends while they're in here practicing. I mean, they need these home owners, I mean, it's not, it's probably empty right now, sitting there empty right now, and these kids that can't be on walking, or the seniors who can't get out and walk in this weather, could be inside a building right now, doing something. There, there's a lot of stuff you could do with it, I guess. But there's no money for the school or the county to invest in that building.
I, I agree. If, I'm not a hundred percent sure how it would work, and we haven't got the fine details on that. I'm sure we have to call it surplus, and the county will take it over, and I'm ninety-nine percent sure that after we put up a auction, and one might shake it off or bash it. If the person who had the highest bid decided not to use the gym for that purpose, and they bought the property, then it would just, it wouldn't be used in the way we're wanting it used anymore. I don't know, I don't know how it's going to happen, I haven't, the commissioner has said a few things, but they haven't said what they would do with it, if they would even want to put up a prop. And then, you're a hundred percent reliable on whatever that person wants to do with it after they purchase it, and that could be anything, they could come in and demolish it, make a parking lot out of it, pull a trailer, and I mean, after it's sold, I don't know, you know, that, that's the scary part.
Okay, so I can't do anything now, I, yeah, I'll choose somebody else that might want to do that, but I can do something about it now, or somebody could, if it was, if we were given that opportunity. You know, over the last four or five years, I've asked, said, let's open that building up, let's get it, let's use that building.
I, I'll do it.
And as it is now, the bathrooms don't work, the, some of the ceilings are falling, we walk into the lobby, you have kids wanting to either use them, I, I mean, so we're, we're just going to sit on it, and not do anything next to it. Is that right?
No, I don't know, I'm just telling you.
That's why, but who does know? I mean, it's a building that's sitting there, and it could, it could be used, you know, what, what about leasing? Why not? I mean, could I lease it?
Well, here's my thought.
I don't want to do that, I don't want to do that.
Here's, here's my thought on that, if we, if we lease it to you, and you do a lot of repair work on it, how long will we make the lease for, and then what will you be willing to spend on it, and then the county, or later on in sometime, it would work, we put up a prop, and would take what you've done to it for improvements, do whatever they wanted to.
Mr. Chairman, I have, I can't, I, I have, I just want to, on with the attorney, a survey would have to be done, number one, and you'd have to do a survey, and then, then it would have to be declared surplus property, and then it would go through the process of surplus property, a public auction. As to a lease, we, I think, I think, I did, we have explored that a little bit, until everybody said, we don't think we want to lease it, so, I, we can go back and revisit that, and yes, there are procedures where government entities do lease out property under appropriate, the example with our baseball facility, we leased that from the county for a ninety-nine year lease, a dollar per year, and I've got billions later, so I talked about that, but, that would have to be explored, but yes, there are procedures where it could be leased, and it would go into finer details of that lease in regard to the details about improvements, and other things done to the building that you can get after.
And when I was asked that question, would you consider leasing, and I just said no, because, one, who's going to pay to get it up and running? If, if you guys are going to do it, then why aren't we already doing it? If you expect me to do it, which I can't see somebody doing that, but, I mean, there, it's, it has repairs that need to be made, and for you all to use it, I, I can't imagine what it costs you all to use it, put our, our students and faculty and, you know, to hold anything in it, but I, I would want to use, and I'm willing to pay, and have it fixed, and then, my, my lease be taken away, or it be sold at auction, and, you know, I, I mean, I couldn't, I couldn't do that. But, I mean, it's either we're not going to use it, or if somebody comes to the auction and they tear it down, or, in the meantime, it's just sitting there, I mean, is there, is there something that you all can do to make it more accessible for the community? I mean, I don't know.
I have two questions. One, what do you think about the survey, and I've referenced the director's letter from the senior center, and I can put you on the line, I should be concerned, and I haven't spoken there yet, but I'm, I want to do that, but, anyway, I want to make sure that I'm understanding this clearly, that if, if, if this building were to be sold, that we are sure that this is not going to affect the operation of the senior center, because I know, I'm speaking for myself, and obviously, I'm a board, I'm never going to approve anything that will affect operations of the senior center here.
Exactly.
That's my stance on that.
Based on what we were given last month, that entire piece of property, all is on the one D.
Correct.
So that would include the senior center building, am I correct, Mr. Curtis?
That's correct, and there was, in the history of this opening of the senior center, the senior, that occurred directly after the close of Woodbury Central High School in nineteen seventy-eight, and then later, they came, Douglas making it here, then, that was later than, they were allowed, there was some agreement that they were allowed to utilize the senior center. I want to think in nineteen seventy-eight, seventy-nine timeframe.
I was glancing at the minutes, but I believe Ms. Judy Shone told us at last month's meeting as well, when that happened, the senior center leases from the county a dollar or mighty good penny, so there is already a lease agreement in place for that property. Yes, that the senior center has.
And they've added all previously, and there's great improvements on that property, too.
So would you wait for us to let make that, wait and start the survey, I mean, that would, that would need to be done?
But you'd have to survey it before you could say, before you would offer it to, to do that, you'd have to survey it to say, this is your boundary, but you'd have to do.
Well, I think, I, I've said it several times, I wouldn't even want anything, I'd have to say your better, anything, I wouldn't want you to be able to go there and have it to walk, and if, you know, the weather was bad, I know they had a, an exercise room over there, but that would give them an opportunity to go any time of the year, you know, of course, the entrance has to be steps, the, the, the handicap accessible, that, I mean, it's, you've got it, it's all in car, it's all in car, it's definitely.
That's what we talked about, we talked about that, handicap ramp is, is there, is taking now, I spoke of this there.
I wouldn't even think of that, um, no.
I have another question, too. Do you, this were to happen, how do you plan on financing?
How about financing?
And that's, that's, that's a big concern.
Why?
Are you able, I mean, are you able to finance, that's, that's my question, I mean, it's, it's going to cost a lot of money for this to be done, so I, I personally, as men of the workforce, I would think, see that you have the financial ability to do this, I mean.
I would, I would, yes, you're asking.
I understand, but I would still need to see that, I would, I would need to see that. I'm not saying I don't believe you, I'm just saying.
You, you need to see, so is that something that you're going to make, make the point?
That you, that you are prepared to invest money in the building, we want, now, we want something to be done with the building.
Then why isn't it happening?
Well, listen, I haven't been born here for that long, okay?
It doesn't matter, I'm not going to give a name.
I'm just saying that I were all, I feel, we're all in agreeance here, that this needs to be something productive done with it, but I'm also considering finances, okay, that's my business, this new bid for board members' opinion, okay, I'm considering finances, it's going to be done, and how this can be cleared, in fact, it costs money to do, so we want to have the assurance, when we approve this, or we don't, or whatever we do, that, that it is actually going to happen, so, that's, that's a concern of mine, and I'm not second guessing anything, I don't know your personal situation, so I'm just saying that it's a concern of mine.
Okay, so, but you're not concerned, you have students who want to know that building is not safe?
Ma'am, absolutely, that's the reason why we're having these conversations, we've talked about this on multiple occasions, I, I want something that way, I feel, we all feel that way, but with anything, it costs money, so we have to take that into consideration, I take that into consideration, so, no financial, no events talked.
So what is it you want?
I just, I need to know if you are financially prepared to complete this endeavor, but it's not like we're putting down land and floor and a home, this is a big deal, I mean, that building needs a lot of work, I mean, I'm not a contractor, but I've, and I have requested, Mr. Curtis, to let me in the building, let me look around, but, I mean, I, I'm, I have a good idea that it's going to be accepted, so I just want to make sure that you're prepared, and I know you have good intentions, and I respect that, so, that's all I can say.
Okay, does any board member want to put forth a motion for action?
Yeah, we're all up for that. I don't, if this is the only way we can get this building to be used, ours, then I'm a hundred percent for it, I hate the fact that the school system cannot afford to do it, the county cannot afford to bring it up, but we have to give it to them, or sell it or lease it, or whatever we decide to do with a private individual, but I think that's the route we're going to take.
I agree.
I still don't know what all this got to happen, to make this happen, and I think we need to know, know what that's got to be, or what it's got to be.
So we need a motion to explore it?
We, we already did that.
That's what we did, right?
I don't, I haven't found any results.
Mr. Curtis, tell us again what the attorney said, when he looked at the data.
Well, it's open interpretation, because it's dated to the Woodbury, Woodbury High School Board, in nineteen twenty-four language, when, you know, you're looking, looking at that, and it's up to interpretation, is it the county's, is it the, is it the school system, I would, I would venture to say, on alternate, but it said schools, so guess what, school board, that would be certainly, and we've done the repairs, we've done, you know, the insurance, when, you know, the, the insurance damage, and they redid the roof and the floor, after the, the rain damage on that, so, what I would recommend is to, if you don't explore the lease, that we look at, and we ask our attorney to look at some other existing leases that are out there, and to see what we're going to do, if you want to do the lease, if you want to do the sale, then you can start the process of doing the sale.
Sitting here on a seesaw, we think, we'll allow that, if, if we declare it surplus, and the county takes it over, well, it's then, and the commission's taking to sell it, are they willing to sell it, I mean, can you talk to enough of them to know what they're going to do with it?
And I'm based in relations with fans that do that, that it's just that building alone, and not the senior center, if they think it can take a while to leave, then that's a whole other situation to be dealing with.
If I'm about the commission, too, you said that it was open for interpretation?
Yes.
Of legal, that's going to tie it up for years to go.
Once we declare it surplus, uh, it becomes a hundred percent clear.
Yes, sir, that's.
That I think most law would agree with you. It's tied up with legal.
But I'm cautious of declaring a surplus, because the way that is structured, that includes the senior center building.
Yes, sir, that's right.
So that is definitely not something we want to declare surplus, because what they've done is they've taken the old homemade building and modified it, unfortunately, the old gym has been neglected.
So maybe just for the, for future, if you go in and have that survey, and you separate a lot of the people in your name, if you separate, so that if you decide on the way you want to do it.
Are you willing to pay the cost of the survey?
What is it, is it, is it going up, is it, I do it like, well, if somebody changes through, it could make a difference from this, I don't, I don't even know, I think.
And you'd have to sort of plot exactly what you want, the plat, if you would, that would have to be, that would have to be done.
I'm okay with us having the survey, I think that's fine, I don't know what section you have to get that done, or that's, this is where I don't understand, I don't know if that's completely up to you to have that done, or we have to arrange it, if that's something I have to, we all have to, I'm unsure about that, but I think that would be the first step in getting this.
Because that lease is still, is still active, it's an active lease for the senior center.
Here's, here's something else that we haven't really discussed, the senior center, that's all time to get, is that the lease that they're doing, I'm, I'm, I've tried to do on some of this, but I, I'll be honest with you, I'm lost, as in, when you start involving government entities into this, it gets to be, it's a mess.
And I, I wish we had it, or at least I had it, but if you look at what Mr. Curtis had for us the last time, the public tax documents on the West State website, all that is one structure on one piece of land, and that does not even give a value to the gym, it gives a value to the senior center.
Am I understanding the playgrounds on this, too?
Yes.
It's insane.
Yes, and it's all on one piece. So, there is one last question, can you do something with a lease in place for ninety-nine years?
We've got to explore that, we've got, we've got, we've got, we've got to research that.
And I ask again, are you willing to pay the cost of the survey, Ms. Walker?
Well, I'd like to know what it costs.
Okay, so you don't know that?
I've made it twenty years since I had that.
That's very specific, I can't write it, I can't do that.
It's, it's complicated, and the more you do, the more complicated it becomes.
Right, I mean, I'm a lot of the folks that we've been.
But I want to see something done, and your idea is make that, and, if I thought I could just hand you the keys, and you go do that?
Sure.
But we can't, I don't know, it's, it's, it's a mess, I mean, it was a mess, but if something really makes that, well, you're right, it's just going to fall you.
And basically, what we've done, Mr. Chairman, at the board's, is to allow the athletic teams to utilize the facility, after, especially after it was renovated with the new floor and the new roof back, thirty years ago now, that, that it's, it's, but it's still, I was in there, I was in there Saturday with this Walker man, coach of the Hillsdale baseball team, St. Kaufman, and it, it's, it's really sad to look at that, here is a jewel in this, in our county that's, that has, but it's the same thing over and over, we've never had the funds enough to do that. Now, there are some recreational funds out there through the county, and you're not going to have enough for a while, as you got in our conversations with across the street. So, what I'm saying, what I'm saying is that our athletic teams have been utilizing it, baseball has been utilizing it, basketball's been utilizing it, but there are some other repairs that are needed right now, just with the lighting alone, that I noticed on there Saturday, and then, and then we've got the heat up and running, and it's, it's, it's happening, but we're going to have to look at, look at some of that lighting in there, that is, that is really, the old phosphorus for tiles that take time to warm up, and I don't know about replacing those, now, if we do the new lighting, certain, you know, if our energy survey be able to do that, that would be a part of that, to, to re, to retool it with probably heating system, and that is, if that is ever accomplished.
Do you think we can get all the commission to get this, besides the pass?
Not to the light teeth, no, we're not going on, you're not, you're not getting all their light teeth, I can guarantee that.
I agree with you.
It'll be, the next one will be the seventh of February.
I would like to hear them say, we call it surplus.
We need something formal from them, because my, my other concern I have, I think Chairman suggested, is that if it ever becomes a part, or let them make the decision, or they have to make the decision, we don't know what they're going to do, we have no clue what they're going to do. Now, we know what we want, we've all discussed that, we're all okay with that building being, you want it to be, but now, the condition they may be on, a totally different page what we're on, and, and I, we don't have any idea what they're thinking, so, we need to have something on the record from them, about where they stand on, because it's a possibility that they may be the, the factor in determining this. about where they stand on, because it's a possibility that they may be the factor determining this.
How they, they, they were.
Regardless.
Right.
Sorry, attorney. Um, I, I just, I did have a couple of questions to clarify. Um, Mr. Fan, I know you said you had heard some opposition. If I remember right, another board member had heard opposition, am I losing my mind, or is that right?
Well.
Was it you or?
It wasn't using the gym, what they stated was, two, three of them stated was, once we sell this piece of property, Woodbury driver may mean something, or the school system may mean something, and you have to buy the property back, and it's definitely a higher cost, which was crazy, and they got in a project to be, be a farmer in this land, and I said, no. I always tried to buy it, they said, well, there you go, but this is a different situation. The building is in.
Dollar strings.
Dollar strings, we have someone willing to, to fix it, and I'm a hundred percent for that. I just don't want to us to do something here, and then turn it over to someone else, and then decide there's something one hundred percent against it, and then we shove ourselves in the book.
Mr. Wilson, you want to comment on what you heard?
If you don't think that I, like, spoke about, because it was just a sentimental bill.
Can I speak to that?
That's, that's all I got, I, that was it.
That was, uh, it is.
Several times.
A veterans gym, um, or the, the central high school.
Right.
Um, and if, therefore, if it was the veterans gym in honor of the veterans, or even do that central high school class, I think that they would be embarrassed or ashamed, the condition of it, if they go in and see it. You know, I, if, if it is bad, if it is a sentimental, I understand that sentimental attitude and things, but if it, if it is, I think they would be ashamed of the condition of it. And you mentioned the repairs to the floor and the roof, and that was paid for because of the insurance on the building, but what was done?